Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission of Bristol, Tennessee, for the May 18th meeting. This is our second Zoom meeting and hopefully our last, so we will call it to order and roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Here.
Alan Luttrell.
Here.
Mark Webb.
Here.
Art Fire Robin.
Here.
Mark Byington.
Here.
Takai Shu.
Here.
I am here. Scott Gaynor. Scott?
He, I think he went to go get a dog. He just left the screen.
Okay. Kevin Buck.
Here.
We're all here, sir.
Luke, can you hear me?
Scott, say here.
Say here.
All right.
Um, what I meant to do, meant to do this. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the discussion of why we are doing this by a Zoom meeting. So that being said and done, I'll turn it over to Ms. Smith to discuss that.
Thank you, Chairman. As you all know by now, the governor extended or suspended provisions of the Open Meetings Act necessary to allow government bodies such as the Planning Commission to meet electronically without the necessity of having a physical in-person quorum. Having said that, in order to do so, you as a body must make a determination that it's necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak for you to meet electronically. At this time, it would be appropriate for you to discuss whether you believe that that is true, and if you do believe it's true, to have a roll call vote on whether this is an appropriate meeting to conduct electronically. If you don't agree that this meeting is appropriate to be conducted electronically at this time, then the meeting would be adjourned in time as you can meet in person.
All right, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
I would move.
All right, we have a motion from Kevin Buck, is that correct?
Yes.
I will second.
And Dr. Webb made the second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion about the necessity of doing this by Zoom? Seeing no discussion, Joel, if you'd call the roll, please.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Alan Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Art Fire Robin.
Yes.
Okeydoke.
All right, thank you very much. Next thing we're going to go to is the approval of minutes. Everybody has their minutes from the April 20th meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the April 20th minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Alan Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor. We'll come back to Scott. Takai Shu.
Yeah. Sorry, everything froze up on me. I don't know what happened.
Was that a yes, Scott?
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Art Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Next up, that get, that's everything?
Yes, it.
All right. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled comments from the public. As we do on all of our Planning Commission meetings, we allow the public to discuss a couple of different times. One, during this unscheduled portion, if there's something that you want to discuss to the Planning Commission, now's the time to bring it forward to us. However, if there's something on our agenda that you want to discuss, we'll give you time at that point in time. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to say, Tim, do you have anybody downtown that wants to speak to us on unscheduled?
No, Mr. Chairman, there is nobody wanting to speak during the public comment period.
Very good. And the next thing we're going to do is we're going to go to old business, and we need to do a little housekeeping on that before we get to it. This is about the special use permit on King College Road. If you guys will be so kind as to remember, last month, we had, we had the public hearing, we had some discussion, et cetera, and et cetera, but before there was a motion and before there was a vote, there was a motion to table it to our next meeting. Ms. Smith, if you'd be so kind as to discuss the logistics of going from last month to this month with the tabling of the motions.
One thing that I think we need to clarify is that at the last meeting, Mr. Buck made a motion to table the issue until there can be an in-person. And so I think what was meant by that was to table the public hearing until there could be an in-person meeting. However, it's on the agenda tonight. This is not an in-person meeting in the sense that there, the Planning Commission is not there. However, the people who are, public comment is in person. The people can come to this, to a location and speak to the Planning Commission without having to use their own internet and without having to use their own, to call in or anything. And so what I think needs to be clarified is whether that suits the intent of the Planning Commission that was expressed in Mr. Buck's motion that was seconded by Mayor Fire Robin and passed by a 72 vote. If it doesn't, then, then probably this public hearing needs to be adjourned until an actual in-person where the Planning Commission is actually in person. But that's a decision for you to make as a Planning Commission. If this meets what you wanted to do when you said that you wanted to vote to have it at an in-person meeting, is this sufficient?
Additionally, there was notification in the paper that we were going to have this meeting tonight and for anybody to come downtown. Is that also correct?
Well, there's been a lot of notice of this public hearing. The initial public hearing was advertised in the paper as required by statute, or the, I should say, the opening part of the public hearing was advertised as required by statute. And then the public hearing itself, the continuation of it has been advertised with signage of the property and with advertising, I believe, on city social media and website. Anybody who spoke last week was notified that the public hearing would be happening tonight, and so those people have had an opportunity to be there and have either arrived or have said they're not going to be there. So I don't think there's a concern from my perspective about advertising for this public hearing. This has been, this is a continuation of a public hearing that was already advertised, and it's been, it's been well-publicized.
I think it'd be appropriate to go to the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion in that order to make sure that they're satisfied. Then we'll have discussion among everybody else to make sure everybody's satisfied, assuming they are.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would move that we bring this back up for discussion.
So I, I agree that this meets, I think our concern was the technology, and as long as the technology continues well for all of us, we have the folks in the room, and if the technology there continues to work okay, then I think that satisfies my concerns.
Is there, okay, is there anybody else that has concerns or comments that they want to address at this time? Danielle, does this take a vote, or is the discussion we have sufficient?
I would say that it is, it's appropriate to take a vote, particularly given the nature, make sure that everybody is on board.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from the same folks that made the motion the second a month ago to table it, and their motion at this point in time is to bring it off the table, continue with the public hearing, continue with any discussion and possible vote. Is there any discussion about the motion that's on the table?
Just to clarify, mine was a second. I think Kevin stated his as a motion. I didn't clearly say that was a second, so.
Yes, we've got, we've got Kevin as a motion and Margaret as a second.
I've got that.
Thank you kind, sir. All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Hey, Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Alan Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Art Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you. By unanimous vote, we will now continue the discussion. Actually, we were, I'm going to assume that we were still doing public hearing. So that being said and done, do we have anybody at the annex? Yes.
Can we, I would suggest that we run through the brief presentation on this again from Sheriff Young, just to clarify to people that are watching what we are discussing, and then at that time, you can do the public hearing part before you all make motions and anything you're all going to do on it. So with that, this is a special use permit for 1649 King College Road, and it is for a sports club to be located in a B1B zone piece of property. And with that, I'll let Mrs. Young give the presentation.
Thank you, Beavers. Good evening, everybody. What I have tonight is largely the presentation that you all saw at last month's meeting, so I'll be brief and just run through these slides quickly to just kind of set up the information for your all's discussion. As Mr. Beaver said, this property is known to be one B, about 10 acres, and just to clarify from last month's meeting, this is, the tax ID is map 21 parcel 10.10, 10.20, and 10.30. The applicant owner is Mr. Chris Taylor, and he is on the Zoom call tonight with us. On the next slide, you'll see an overview aerial map of the property in question. This is outlined, Tim, yeah, there we go. So that properties in question are outlined in red. The next slide shows the properties with the zoning designations as well. This property is, it does have a split zone, so the front, front part of the property is known B1B, which is pink, so you can see other parcels along King College Road are also have that B1B zoning. The back half of the property is known R3, which is a multifamily residential zone. One thing to point out about this zoning issue is that in the B1B district, you do have a number of business uses that are allowed by right, right now. And Tim, yep, there we go. So on this slide, you'll see some of those business uses that are allowed. Again, they don't require the special use permit, so someone could, Mr. Taylor could apply to, to build one of these uses right now. Of course, you'd have to go through all the city's application processes, site plan application, building permit, all those good things, but those business uses are allowed on the property right now. If you skip, let's see, Tim, if, I'm sorry, I got a little bit ahead of myself, but if you look at the very bottom of the screen, once, there we go. Okay, if you look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see that it lists uses permitted by special use permit are those that are the same as in the RM district. And then, Tim, if you'll flip to the next slide, you'll see those uses that are permitted by special use in the RM district. And the final item on the list is a private golf, swimming, tennis, and similar sports club. So that is the criteria for which this use is coming to you all tonight for review and approval. Special use permit considerations, these items are set out in the zoning ordinance. The things that the Planning Commission can look at are items such as ingress and egress, parking and loading areas, refus and service areas, utilities, screening, signs, and exterior lighting, setbacks and maximum lock coverage, and then general compatibility with adjacent properties and property in the district. The next slide has an aerial view of the property, so this is looking down on the subject parcel. The next slide shows the land at street level, and then the next slide shows the concept plan that we looked at and discussed some during the April meeting. So this shows an 18,000 square foot gymnasium type facility with the associated parking and landscaping. And this is a concept plan, which is what's required for submission for review by Planning Commission for the special use permit. If approved by the Planning Commission, they will go through the site plan application process, and they'll be, at that time, they would submit more documents for site plan review by city departments. At the next slide, you'll see, we'll just walk through very quickly because we did this last month, and if I skip, if I go too fast, just wave at me and I'll slow down. We can discuss each of these points, but as far as ingress, egress, and off-street parking goes, there are two entrances proposed from King College Road. Development Services staff has looked at this and feel like the traffic impacts of the proposed development will be minimal to the roadway system. The total square footage of the gym is 18,000 square feet, which really by our zoning ordinance, parking regulations does not require many spaces. It requires eight parking spaces, but the conceptual site plan, of course, provides 118 spaces with eight of those spaces as ADA accessible. On the next slide, Tim, we'll talk about the refuse area, and that is provided at the back of the site, at the back of the building, and that is required by the zoning ordinance to be screened from, from view. There is water and sanitary sewer service available to the property from the City of Bristol. And then finally, a final item is screening and buffering. Because this abuts a residential use, the developer will be required to install screening to provide some, some buffer from the adjacent residential property owner. There are several options in which they can do this. On the next slide, you'll see there are three options to, that they might choose to buffer from any residential property that surrounds them. So unless you all stipulate in your approval, one of these options, staff would be looking for one of these options when they go through the site plan approval process, so we would ensure that they do meet the buffering requirements at site plan approval. On the next slide, just a quick summary of a couple more items for special use consideration. All lighting, when they go through the site plan application process, lighting will be reviewed to make sure that it meets with city code. Their setbacks and maximum lock coverage, what they've provided to us on the concept plan, it does meet all, all regulations as far as setbacks go and lock coverage goes for the B1B zoning district. On the next slide, just a quick summary, and Ms. Smith went through a lot of this with her introduction or comments on the advertising. We did advertise this in the Bristol Herald Courier and have put up public notification signs on the site. We did receive several phone calls or emails from different folks when we were waiting for you all to hear this for the April meeting. Since the April meeting, I did talk to one gentleman who lives a couple lots down on King College Road and gave him some information about the project, and he did not have any objection to this proposal. The two folks that did call in to talk to the Planning Commission about this during the April meeting, I did reach out and make contact with them to make sure they know, knew that the meeting was going to occur tonight. I believe one, a couple, the Bakers are actually going to participate tonight and are present at the annex, so they'll provide their comments. And I have an email, if you don't mind, I'll read to you briefly from Mrs. Rife, which she had emailed something in, and she spoke at the, the last Planning Commission. So it's just a very short email, but I'll read it to you if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. She says, "Thanks again, Mrs. Young, for the notice and information about this meeting. Brian and I will not be able to attend this time, but our previously voiced concerns remain the same. Most of our concerns, of course, are more relevant to what is done on the backside of Mr. Taylor's property that abuts our fence line. We don't, we do not subscribe to the weekly Bristol Herald Courier, so we do not receive public notices published that way. If there are any Planning Commission meetings in the future where plans for the remaining portions of Mr. Taylor's property are scheduled for discussion, we would really appreciate a heads up. Have a good week, and... So those were comments to, from Mrs. Rife in an email to me yesterday morning. So with that, the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the special use permit application for a sports club at 1649 King College. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions or comments to staff at this point in time? I'm seeing none. So now then, let's talk about public input, as I understand we do have some folks at the annex that would like to address it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have, the Bakers are here to speak to Planning Commission. There is a slight delay with the TV they're viewing, so we will give them a chance to go ahead and make their way to the computer to have the public comment. In the meantime, I'll just maybe cut short some things I would say at the end that the public doesn't have to do with this, but there are some Planning Commission members' terms expiring June 30th, and you all should receive a letter encouraging you all to apply if you want to again. Those would be Mr. Shu, Mr. Byington, and Mr. State. So your three terms expire June 30th, and you should be getting a letter from the city where you can apply back to, if you want to serve again. You can do that online electronically, or if you want to drop it by the annex, I can take those applications. Also, there were no city council items at the Also, there were no city council items at the last city council meeting here earlier in the month, so there is not a city council update. And we will see ultimately when the public comment, when they start, we will see the video and their audio come up. So, Mr. Chairman, you will know when they are ready to address the planning commission, the Bakers, and you can ask for their name and address like you would any public comment. And I hear them walking back to the room now, so.
As far as you know, are they the only ones that are going to be speaking?
Yes, sir, that is the only people we have here for public comment for this particular item. And that looks like Mr. Baker's there, and Mr. Baker, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Baker for you.
Okay, Mr. Baker, if you do not mind, please, we need your name and your address for the record, and it will appear in the minutes.
My name is Daniel Baker, I live at sixteen twenty-five King College Road.
Thank you kind sir. You had some comments that you wanted to make about this proposed special use permit. Floor is yours.
Well, uh, you know, mostly, obviously, I'm against it. You know, it's, it doesn't seem to fit in the area to me. You know, we're surrounded by houses, obviously. And then there's the, the concerns of, you know, displaced wildlife, noise pollution, another, they're talking about using it for, for permit or tournaments, for sports and stuff, you know. The parking lot lighting, I've, I've got chickens, you know, I keep chickens for eggs and whatnot. The parking lot lighting is a concern for mine, you know, whether it be twenty-four hours, if it'll shine on my property at, you know, odd hours and things like that. You know, the, the screening between the property and my property, is it, I was, you know, wondering if that was going to be just trees, or if a fence could be put up, or, or something like that to, to keep people from wandering off onto my property, you know what I mean? Those are some of my concerns.
Thank you. What we'll do is, you, you did bring up a couple of concerns that I would like staff to address, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as with any development that would go on that property, we do have, in regards to parking lot lighting, we do have requirements that there'd be zero point five foot candles of light is the maximum light spillage that can come across a property line, so a half a foot candle when you're adjacent to residential property, and they will have to give us photometrics to show that they're only at the max, a half a foot candle of light illumination across the property, at the property line. Screening and fencing, you all, there was a previous slide that we showed the different options there. Planning Commission can look at those options and pick one if they want to impose a specific one, or impose what requirements they feel are necessary to be, make this a compatible development. Just like to remind people once again that this development does require a special use permit because it is a sports club, but there are other uses that could go on this property that, such as gas stations, convenience stores, rest, full-service restaurants, things like that, that would not require a special use, but would still have to meet all the site plan requirements regarding runoff, regarding lighting, regarding noise, everybody has to meet our noise regulations in the city, be it a development or a citizen. So with that, I think I've covered most of them. Wildlife, that is not something we regulate with development. The only people that would regulate that would be TWRA, and it would be more as if there were an endangered species on the property, so.
All right. We greatly appreciate that. Is there anything else you want to bring up at this point in time?
Hang on one second, I have a feeling my wife is texting me.
All right.
Uh, yeah, so see, my wife's out with the kids in the car. She was worried about automobile fluids running off, which obviously, I'm, I'm sure there's regulations on that. And then, you know, where the water would run off, is that something you guys could, is that something you guys regulate? Is it going to run off in the same place it does now? Off of his parking lot, is it going to come into my property at the same place? And then, she's worried about the noise pollution, children in the parking lots, hanging out after tournaments, and, you know, all that stuff. You know, kids, kids, as we know, are loud.
Mr. Beavers?
As regarding auto fluids, we do require, since this development is over one acre in size, we do have water quality requirements that they have to meet for the first one point. I think it's one point oh four, it may be one point oh two inches of rain runoff. That would treat the water for pollutants, where they have to remove eighty percent suspended solids from the development when the water is coming off that first, let's just call it an inch of runoff. So that is a water quality feature that will have to be incorporated into the development. The water will have to come across to your property line in the same form and fashion that it is currently coming across there, unless they work out some agreement with you separately on that. But our regulations would require that for any development that goes there, so.
And I hope it's.
Noise, once again, we have noise regulations, the city has a noise ordinance that we impose on all citizens and businesses. They would have to meet those requirements in the noise ordinance.
Okay.
Hopefully, I've answered your question somewhat.
I think it does.
All right, we want to thank you very much for coming in. We all acknowledge these are unusual circumstances, and we appreciate coming down, kids in the car, the wife's out in the car and so forth. We appreciate you doing it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Beavers, do we have anybody else that's going to be involved in the public comment at this point in time?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have no further public comment participants.
What about, okay, that being said and done, I believe we have the owners, are they going to participate in the public comment? Or are they merely going to be around to answer questions of the planning commission?
We do have the developer, Chris Taylor, and his engineer architect, John Punish, are on this Zoom chat that, either way you want it, they can, if they want to speak now, they can. If you want to ask questions of them, they can, either way, whatever your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
That being said and done, without objection from planning commission, let's close the public hearing portion thereof. And now we'll bring it back to planning commission for discussion, and as we normally do, we'll have some discussion even before we have a motion, then we'll have additional discussion after we have a motion to discuss. So is there anybody on the planning commission that wants to discuss or ask questions of the owner slash developer? Mark, go ahead.
As I said last month, I'm concerned over the aesthetics of the project, you know, this is a beautiful area back in there. And I'm hoping that the design and materials used will fit in with, with our standards, is that correct?
We do have material use requirements for that property that are for B one B zones, and those are no ribbed metal, no bare plain block, Sheriff's, what, there's two other ones there. I can't think of them off the top of my head now, I just drew a blank on the, had to form them in my head and forgot, Sheriff.
Oh, single sheet corrugated metal, no bare concrete block, no bare cinder block, and there's some stipulations on that. And Mr. Punish and Mr. Taylor, both, we've talked about that with them, so they're, they are aware that there are some prohibited materials that would be prohibited for that project.
And Mr., Mr. Taylor, Mr. Punish, if you all want to zoom in, video and audio, that's probably an appropriate time, and you could address that better than Sheriff and we can just state the regs, and you can actually tell your vision there.
Good evening, this is Chris Taylor. We were going to use a mix of block, brick, and, and steel or metal. So, yeah, the, the goal would be to aesthetically have a pleasing site building for that area.
Yes, and, uh, this is John, we're well aware of the limitations and the requirements of the ordinance, working real closely with your staff there, and obviously, we need to submit everything through them for review, so I trust that their, our first submission will be in compliance. If we're, if we're short of anything, I'm sure they'll point it out to us.
John, let us stay real legal here, we need your name and address for the minutes.
My name is John Punish, I'm with Appalachian Technical Services. We're in both Wise and Amington, Virginia, and we're the architec engineer working with Mr. Taylor on the project.
And Mr. Taylor, if you don't mind, your name and address also, please.
Chris Taylor, three two four Wesley Court, Bristol, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Planning Commission, do you have any questions for these two gentlemen?
Yeah, I have, have one question, this regards to the water running down towards Mr. Baker's property, he's concerned about. Is there any potential to channel, divert that water underground into a sewer, or some way to mitigate that concern?
Currently, there's not a storm drainage system out in that area except a culvert, down on Mr. Baker's property, adjacent to it, down on the lower end of the drainage shed, so there's not an existing storm drain system out there, but the culvert under the road down on the, I guess, the east side, southeast side of Mr. Baker's property. So it will currently have to flow, like I said, it has to cross the property line in a similar fashion as it currently does. So the, the goal of anybody when we look at design is, you know, we look at peak flows, and then we look at how it's crossing the property line to try to mimic the existing conditions.
That's correct, and it would be our intention, just in typical development, to channel everything within the roadway, roadway, and we're looking at that with your staff.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, right now, with, with all the vegetation and everything, we have a large range, a lot of we, you know, immersed into the, the ground and everything, but, you know, with the sidewalks and the parking lot, you have the potential of a lot of water coming off it at one time.
That's correct, and that's why all the municipalities have the stormwater regs, they're pretty well detailed, and the intention is to keep the water from discharging across the property line in the same manner, same quantity as it is now.
So it should not be any worse than?
Right, right, I mean, and, and that's what, I, we'll have to submit detailed calculations and plans to your staff, and there's a review process in your, your guidelines are pretty well detailed, pretty well state, state regulated, and we'll adhere to those, we, it'll be quite reviewed by your staff. We're working real closely with your staff right now, they've been helpful so far, and we expect them to be very cooperative with us in the future, but I know they'll be keeping a strong eye on it, and, and we'll need to conform to that. Our expectation is when we get approval, not only have we designed it, but your staff has reviewed it and accepted it, and we should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
What other questions do we have? Mr. Punish, have you done any jobs in Bristol, Tennessee recently?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, we, we've, we've been working in your all this area for twenty years, I mean, I mean, we're, we're familiar with, with your staff, I'm not thinking of any project right off the top of my head right now, but, I mean, we've, we've been in your area.
All right, I just wanted to make sure you're familiar with the, the various requirements that Bristol, Tennessee does have.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Webb, I think you had a question?
Kelly, as a, as a follow-up to my concern on aesthetics, I have seen some of these sport complexes and buildings painted just terrible color just for attraction. I, I would hope that the, the, as far for aesthetics, that these would blend in with the countryside and, you know, earth tone colors, and I don't think we can regulate that, can we, Tim? But, but, you know, I would, I would want to blend in with, with the community rather than stick out like a sore thumb.
We do not regulate colors at this time in any of our regulations.
I, I realize that. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that the, the exterior would be aesthetically pleasing to the community.
I don't see any problem with that, I mean, it's, it's our intent to make it fit into the surrounding landscape. I don't expect any red neon or green flashing neon, but it's, we, we understand your comments and appreciate it, and I, I think you'll be pleased.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments at this point in time before we entertain a motion?
Well, actually, I have a, I have a comment that I share the, the prior speaker's concern about the buffering on the east and west sides of it, there's, that's residential there. According to the preliminary site plan that was given, it says they're going to use section B, but I, I'd rather see it be solidified a little bit more, to use option two, which has the fencing along with the trees as the, the buffer. That would be my, my, my desire to see that. So, any motion, I'd suggest that we include that.
Which option did you ask for?
Well, as I understand the question, Mr. Grant, you would prefer to have option two, is that correct, with the trees and the fence?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that's understood, and that's, I think maybe Mr. Beavers can help us out here, but as I understand it, your all's ordinance are very clear what you require, but you also give us three choices, and I believe those choices are Mr. Taylor's, but we understand the question and, and taking consideration, but.
The planning commission can, as part of your stipulations, the planning commission, you all can choose to use any type of screening and buffering you all feel makes it appropriate in the area, so they can dictate what screening and buffering goes there if they choose to do that. Obviously, it takes a vote, a majority vote to do that, but I think if I understand Mr. Gainer's question, he just would like the motion, if it's made to approve the special use permit to require option two, type B buffer option two, is that right, Mr. Gainer?
Correct.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, we, we need to do whatever you all tell us, so am I correct, unless you all tell us something different on this approval, we, we can choose one of the three, but if, if you just, if you decide on option two, then we'll need to comply?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
The only problem I would see with the wooden fence is hindering the, I mean, there are a lot of deer in there that go down to that, the cactails and drink and stuff like that, and get hit running back and forth across the road. I'd rather let deer roam around than throw a fence up. I think the trees would be just fine. That's my personal opinion.
I tend to agree with Mark, I mean, I like the idea of fencing, I think that's, but this is more rural, and I agree that we don't know what the patterns of the wildlife are, and giving them free range could be a lot better than putting up fencing.
Well, my my view is it's less than looks like. I mean, I'm eyeballing it, but I mean, parts of it look like it's less than 30 feet, the parking lot from the property line. And, you know, I'd like to, having that fence there helps knock down some of the noise as well. So that that's my my view on that.
I think it would be good to get input from more members of the planning commission of how they feel on requiring option two before we get to a motion, because otherwise, we may end up having to vote just to change the option. So let's let's get a consensus of opinion, if you guys don't mind.
Well, on the option, on option two, the concern I would have would be the ongoing maintenance that you would have to, you know, look at. As we know, wood decays, and we're talking about putting up a potential of masonry wall. I mean, that's just, it could be just a block wall that it's very not very aesthetically pleasing as well. So I would be I would be against a wooden or block wall.
Kelly, I think the trees would be fine, and a fence or a wall would detract from that area.
And I think option two, I would have to agree with Scott. I think it's a, you know, I may agree on the nature perspective. But I think it's option two is a pretty good compromise with both the the neighbor, the homeowner next door, and the property, current property owner with regards to their concerns and issues and such.
Dr. Webb, how do you feel?
I see both sides of the picture. I just, I think really, options two or three, I would go with. I wouldn't, it, I'm in agreement with a wooden fence. You know, 10 years, it's decayed, and who's going to replace it? And you got trees that that are beautiful. If you, you know, I can go with the trees. I don't necessarily need option two.
Kevin?
I think all the options are fine. I don't see any reason to restrict the developer to any particular one.
So you're saying just go with type B and let them choose between them and city staff on which way they would go?
That is what I'm saying, yes.
All right. I think we have a consensus of opinion. That being said and done, are there any other questions, any more thoughts?
And the consensus of the opinion is what?
Well, we're we're waiting on a motion at this point in time. And yes, Margaret, go ahead.
I think I heard Kevin make a motion.
It was not my intention to make a motion, but I will make one.
I think that's good.
I will move that we approve the special use permit as recommended by staff.
Can I say something here?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Just just for clarity, then, if we've got two areas for screening, the Baker's side and the and the other side. And it's my understanding that without any discussion here, theoretically, we could choose option one for one side and option three for another. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, unless there's a stipulation by the planning commission.
Right, right, okay.
Then you could choose from any of the three options on each side.
Right, okay, so.
They don't have to be the same on each side.
Okay, so I guess for clarity, if if the commission is considering option two to be a requirement, is that going to be required for both sides or just the side of the neighbor that has voiced a concern?
Well, the motion, the motion as it stands now is no requirement.
Yes, that's the motion, and they'll just vote. But, you know, they'll assume somebody will second it, they may not.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The motion is to take staff's recommendation, which I'm getting ready to read. Staff's recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the special use permit for sports club use at 1649 King College Road. That is the staff's recommendation, that was the motion that was made and seconded. We will now discuss the motion that is on the floor.
Now, just to clarify, that means that that the developers have a choice of those three options when they're designing their site plan?
Yes, ma'am, our zoning ordinance requires that they provide a type B buffer. That's the way the zoning ordinance is written, and one of, and there's three options of buffer under that type B. So, yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gainer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate that. And to all of our guests that have participated, we completely, completely appreciate your understanding. Tim, we're getting ready to move to the next item, which is new business. I understand that we do have somebody that is potentially going to address that. You want to go ahead and start getting them geared up and ready to go?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colvin, Roger Colvin, is here to, but he does not wish to speak unless you all have questions for him. So if you do have questions for him, we can get him, and he can answer those questions for you. But if you don't have any questions, he does not want to address the planning commission about the project, so.
All right, so you're simply going to stay out of the room unless we need him to come in?
Yes, sir.
All right, then let's get going.
Mr. Chairman, up for consideration next is a subdivision on Bristol Caverns Highway. You all may remember, last month, you all approved a waiver of the 50-foot lot frontage requirements to 25-foot for this specific property. And this is just the follow-up preliminary and final plat showing how the lot will be subdivided. If with that, I'll let Sheriff get the presentation, and I will change my slides down.
Thank you. Yes, this will look very familiar to you all tonight, because this is a lot of the same slides we looked at last month for the waiver request. This property is owned by Mr. Coleman, who is present at the annex tonight. It is located at 1561 Bristol Caverns Highway. And the zoning that is in place in this area is the Sullivan County A1 General Agriculture Estate Residential District. The next slide shows an aerial view of the property, and the zoning is designated by the color green here. So this whole area is zone A1. The next slide shows a street view of the property. And then the next slide shows just scooting to the left just a little bit and looking down the driveway. So this is the property there with the three homes located on it. The next slide shows the actual plat was revised with all the notes we gave to the surveyor last month. And then, of course, it can now be approved since it received the waiver request from the planning commission in April. And that that waiver, again, was for the lot frontage requirement. The reason it's coming to you all tonight is because it is a major plat with it being a subdivision plat that involves three lots or more. So you do have a three lot subdivision here. As far as the things that staff reviews when we look at these plats on the next slide, the existing land use is single-family residential. Water service is available from the city of Bristol, and they do utilize a subservient system that has been approved by T.D.O. On the next slide, they do meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance of Sullivan County. They they meet the, with the waiver request approved, they meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations for the city of Bristol. And the ingress egress is on this shared driveway off of Bristol Caverns Highway. So we, staff has reviewed this with the waiver request, they meet the requirements that they need to. And the recommendation to you all tonight is for the approval of the preliminary and final plat plat approval for the replat of the Roger Colvin Jr. property. And as Mr. Beaver said, Mr. Colvin is there, and he's available to answer questions, but I don't think he has anything as far as addressing the planning commission.
Thank you very much. And as we generally do when we have a Sullivan County proposal in front of us, if you would, this is not in the city limits of Bristol, it's in Sullivan County. Explain why it's in front of us.
So, yes, you're exactly right. This is located within the city's urban growth boundary, but is not within the city limits. It is, it goes through review, and it's reviewed against Sullivan County's zoning ordinance. But from the subdivision plat perspective, it must come through the city of Bristol and must meet the city's subdivision plat, subdivision regulations and plat process requirements. So that's the reason it's coming to you all tonight as a major subdivision.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up to the planning commission for any questions. Y'all are making it easy.
I'll move to accept the, or I'll make the motion to accept the subdivision plot.
Scott has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Margaret made the second. You have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing seeing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell. Malin.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gainer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, new business, Sullivan County rezoning recommendation, also Bristol Caverns Highway. Who has that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I had to hit my unmute button there. Up for consideration on Bristol Caverns Highway is a rezoning request to go from B1 Convenience Neighborhood Business District to A1 General Agricultural Estate Residential District. With that, Ms. Young will give you a presentation.
All right, thank you. And we're going to move just down the road a little bit on this one, down Bristol Caverns Highway to a portion of Tax Map 39 in Group A Parcel 410. And the owners of this property are Susan and John Mayhew. And as Mr. Beaver stated, their request is to rezone from Sullivan County B1 Zone to the A1 Zone. And the reason that this is coming to you all tonight is, again, it's in the urban growth boundary, it's not in the city limits. So anything within the urban growth boundary is reviewed by the city's planning commission, who makes a recommendation that then is then goes to the county commission for the final approval. So tonight, your all's ask is for a recommendation on this rezoning that then will be for the county commission. Hit mute, didn't mean to, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so the next slide shows a location map, and you can see we're just to the left of the the plat we looked at just a few minutes ago. The parceling question for rezoning is highlighted in red. The next slide shows a few street views of the parcel. There was a building located here at some point in time that has since either been demolished or been taken down to some degree. You can see a little bit of the footprint there on the photo. The land is vacant except for a shed building. In the area, you have low-density, single-family residential properties to the west and to the south. And then you have a church that's adjacent to the parcel just to the northeast. This parcel is served by the city of Bristol for water services. The next slide shows a zoning chart of the existing zoning and existing land uses. Again, it's largely residential, single-family in this area, with the exception of the church located to the rear of the property. The next slide shows the map of the property again. You can see this this parcel is a little bit of an anomaly in this area. The green indicates the A1 Zone, which is what they're requesting to rezone to. But this parcel has been just a little bit of an island of different type zoning in this area. So this is one of the reasons that Bristol staff certainly recommends to the planning commission to rezone this parcel. The Future Land Use Plan and Policy, this is the city's Future Land Use Plan and Policy, and this shows that indicates that the property will be developed as low-density residential. And one of the policies that's included in our Future Land Use Policy is to keep protect land resources in a way that contributes to the community health, safety and quality of life. So we feel that this rezoning request is in line with that that policy to protect the character of neighborhood, neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. So the staff recommendation to the planning commission tonight is because the subject parcel aligns with that residential character of the surrounding properties, and it aligns with the city's Future Land Use Policy, which projects low-density residential in the area. Staff recommends to the planning commission to send a favorable recommendation to the Sullivan County Commission for this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Is the owner of the property present? Tim?
No, the owner of the property is not here tonight.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff at all? Hearing seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Is there a second? That was Margaret that made the second. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Mark Byington.
Yes.
Evan Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gainer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. That is all we've got for new business. We'll now get into other matters, which is a comprehensive plan presentation. Who has that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up next is a presentation of the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use and Plan Policy. What will, Ms. Young, tonight will be presenting that document. We provided that earlier to you all for your review. Also, this, if you all choose, we have already advertised for a public hearing for both documents to occur at the June 15th Planning Commission meeting. Those notices have to go out 30 days in advance. So we had to advertise that before this planning commission meeting. But it has been advertised, obviously, we can cancel that if you're all not comfortable with the document. So with that, Ms. Young will give the presentation, and certainly, as she probably will tell you, ask any questions you may on the document.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as as Mr. Beaver stated, this document So, as, as Mr. Beaver stated, this document is something that is approved by the planning commission and does require a public hearing to do so. We've been working on this for some time. You all might remember this kicked off, actually, a couple of years ago. So, it kicked off, we had several meetings, several stakeholder meetings, and then it's kind of been gaining ground and being worked on quietly in the background. The planning staff has put a lot of time and work into this on editing and providing comments back to the consultants, so it's been a real, it's exciting to get here tonight to be able to present it to you all. And we presented, the consultant actually presented to city council during their work session in April, it was April 28th. So, two of our council folks have heard this presentation to some degree, and then I think at least one planning commissioner listened in on that conversation as well. So, I'll try to do this justice tonight. But, we, certainly when our consultant started working on this, and then when he started his presentation, he started out with all the compliments, of course, which are on this next slide. And throughout this, throughout this process, they really hammered home with us that Bristol's got a lot of amazing, great things going on, so you're starting from a point of not to, how do you get, how do you get better in a sense, but how do you become great? So they, they said that we're really building on an enviable foundation here, that we have a very vital downtown, we have a strong and proud community, we have a great arts and music tradition, we're a cultural destination, absolutely unrivaled nature and outdoor opportunities. We have a growing economy and the city and community has a commitment to community infrastructure. So the consultants were very excited when they came here and saw this comprehensive plan as a way to springboard to even better things, but was, they were very complimentary of this city, even as it is right now. So, that was, that was exciting. The next slide, and I'm not going to read all these to you, but I'll just hit a couple high points, but a comprehensive plan is a valuable long-range tool. It's not, it's not something that's a zoning ordinance, so it's kind of visionary, it has an impetus for action, legislation, planning and financing, it helps communities make decisions, it integrates all of the existing planning work that's going on, it has been going on in the years past, it helps the city prioritize, and it really takes the document to the public and to stakeholders to, to see what the community values in terms of future projects. On the next slide, Tim, what a comprehensive plan, what it's not is again, it's not a zoning code, it's not a transportation study, it's not some of the documents that we have done as a city already, it's not an economic development plan. It takes all these things and links them together and attempts to exist above these things to provide a vision for the city. So, the next slide shows, I think this helps put it in perspective a little bit of how this thing integrates with everything else we do. So you see a tree here and the section labeled at the bottom shows regional items, so things that don't stop at Bristol's borders, things like flood plains and wetlands and transportation issues. So those don't stop at the city's border, so those are regional issues. The next slide shows the trunk of the tree, which then becomes, I mean, it becomes what holds everything else up, so it takes the roots of those regional plans and it turns into this comprehensive trunk, which is our comprehensive plan. The next slide shows some orange and, orange, those come out of our comprehensive plan and those are ordinances and codes. And then the final image shows the very ends of the tree and that becomes some of your planning and design manuals. So those, they all trickle back to each other and build upon each other, but it's helpful in seeing that the comprehensive plan is kind of the trunk that holds it all up. So that's your ideas and your vision that holds up everything else and helps you move those projects down the line. Next slide, and I'll talk just a little bit about the process. We kicked off meeting with planning commission and city council many months ago. We had several community forums, open house meetings, and we had several meetings with a comprehensive advisory committee that helped get a lot of input in those early stages of the comprehensive plan. We also had an online participate, online participation tool that we probably advertised at some of the planning commission meetings where people were able to put, you know, the dots on a map, add comments to certain areas of town where you have suggestions. We did that as well. So, it's been quite a collaborative process throughout the timeline of this whole project. The next slide talks a lot about, or talks, shows the document review process, and this was really intense in Bristol. Bristol's very unique in that we have a lot of wonderful plans and studies. These plans and studies were already helping to inform decisions and helping spur ideas for projects, and they all, they all were all going on kind of either in recent years or at the time of the comprehensive plan. So, the comprehensive plan folks really took a deep dive into some of these studies to see what the majority of like, with the big, the big, come out of these studies and they tried to link them all up in the comprehensive plan. So as you looked through the comprehensive plan, you probably saw some little highlighted box where they tried to pull in some of the key elements out of some of these studies rather than just totally reinvent the wheel on some of them. So, that was a big, a big step in this process, is the document, review of the existing documents that we have. So as you look through the comprehensive plan, it's, it's centered around six themes, and these are actually the themes that the American Planning Association recommends right now that you write. This is the best practice for writing comprehensive plans right now. So as you look through the document, you'll see it, it's really built upon these six things. So fostering a livable built environment, nature, fostering a resilient economy, having an intentionally fair and open community, nurturing a healthier community, and then engaging in collaborative regionalism. The consultants, which I don't know if I said this at the beginning, but the consultants are a design workshop out of Asheville, North Carolina, that's who we worked with on this. When they finalized this comprehensive plan, of course, they, they gave us like the list of vital actions that the city needed to take. So these are those items on the screen, we need to, of course, adopt the plan, which is what we'll start working on now with the planning commission's guidance. We need a person to oversee the implementation, we need to educate departments within the city and have them buy in and use the document. They suggest we have an annual report on the, on the progress that's going on during the year on the comprehensive plan. The best practice for comprehensive plans is to really go in and evaluate the plan every five years and then every 10 years update it. So, do essentially kind of what we've done this year or the past several months on a 10-year basis. Seven key planning actions were in the comp plan. That is just my screen, I can't, okay. So, the seven key planning actions were to preserve important features and landscapes, to create some corridor master plans, to create specific development character types, and then amend our zoning to help achieve those character types, to support new and existing activity centers, to master plan downtown neighborhoods, to encourage accessible city services, parks, healthy food options and transit, to improve and encourage neighborhood connections to natural open spaces with trails and plays. As you flip towards the back of the comp plan, you'll see a number of pages that look like this, and this action plan matrix. This charts take all of the action items that are in the, with chapters, and you'll see it ranks them as short, medium, long-term projects. So this is something that will be help, will be used to help manage this document as we can kind of focus, and obviously some take a little bit of time, some are pretty easily done, some take a lot of time, some take money, sometimes, some don't. So this, this chart will help the city staff to stay on top of how they can make things happen and cross things off the list as they're able to. The next slide, and this is an important one, and I'll kind of use it tonight already, but this is the future land use plan and policy. And as you all know, when we have a rezoning that comes before you, one of the things that we look at very closely is what does the future land use plan show? Now, our future land use plan, if you all have a, have a copy that's hanging out in the back of your zoning ordinance, I think we put one in your packet, just so you could compare, but it's a four quadfold document that has all the policies that are part of the future land use plan, and then it has a big map on the inset, on the inset. That was adopted in 2013. And again, every time a rezoning comes to the planning commission or city council, one of the things we look at is what does the future land use plan say? And tonight, I showed you that little clip that showed that area of Bristol Caverns Highway as low density residential and said, you know, one of the reasons we're making this recommendation to you all is that it jives with the future land use plan, it aligns with its policies, so staff's recommendation is for this approval. So, that's one of the important ways that we use this document. But what you have, let's see, Tim, if you go to the next slide. What we have proposed with this is an updated document that the design is updated and freshened up and use some of the community relations branding to help tie it together with other city documents, so hopefully it's fresher and easier to use. We also introduced some introduction and explanation pages, so if you look at the existing 2013 version of this document, you open it up and it has policies and a map. There's not a lot of explanation or guidance or how to use or how a city use, uses language. So, we added that in there to hopefully provide some help to people looking to rezone and then help for staff from using the document to make recommendations to you all. The policy language is updated just a little bit. We didn't add a lot of change here because I think it's really served the planning commission and city council well thus far. We added some land use descriptions. If you look at the existing land use plan, you see that the map designates these land use classifications as low density, high density, commercial and so on, but there's no explanation of what that means from the land use perspective. So what we did is in the document, which, Tim, if you don't mind, click on the next page or the next slide, I'm sorry. If you look over to the right, we added just a visual cue, an image of what this might mean, and added some language to help describe what the land use category is. Specifically for the land use, the land use categories, we added a, just a ballpark of how many units that means. So as people are looking to rezone, especially from the land use designation, it would help you to decide, well, is that more R1, R1A, R3, hopefully will help us in the future with that. But that's something that, that doesn't exist in the existing land use plan. The next slide, Tim, this shows the, the future land use map as we have it drafted for your all's consideration. Again, there's not a tremendous amount of change with this. The bigger change is that we added a medium density land use. Again, the existing plan has low and has high, you know, we all know there's a lot in between low density and high density. So we went into areas of town that we considered more medium and tried to show them as such. And one, an obvious change on this map versus the one that's adopted now is we went in and showed the area that is the pinnacle as commercial, obviously. So the next map, or the next slide, Tim, it showed, this is just an inset of more kind of the heart downtown, where it gets a little bit denser, it's a little bit harder to read. So we just wanted to give a zoomed in version of this area of town so we could, we could see it a little bit better. But that is, those are the, the big changes, and I know it's a big, a big project and a big idea, and one of the reasons we wanted to kind of present it to you all tonight and then have the next month, if you, you know, as you look through it, as you think of questions, we can kind of try to answer those questions or have them to discuss as a group for the next time the planning commission needs. But I'm happy for any questions, and again, that the intent is for the, the planning commission will adopt this document, and as Mr. Beaver stated in his introduction, we do have to have a 30-day lead time on that, which meant that we went ahead and advertised for the June meeting, just so we can meet that deadline if you all would like to make a decision that night.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are no actionable items on this tonight, other than if you all wish to discuss or ask questions. If you see anything over the next, before the next planning commission meeting, any comments, questions, just please feed them to the staff, the sheriff, and we'll try to address those at the next planning commission meeting also. So with that.
Can I say this is a draft?
Yes, sir, it's a draft unless, you know, if there's no comments or changes, obviously, it's a final version, but if you see something, please let us know in the document.
Do you think maybe on page 162, we can change Mary Beington's name to Mark Beington?
Possibly, we could do that.
It was in there right once, they called him over, but I've been called worse.
I have a question. So a long time ago, when we did a land use plan, it ended up that it's a document that's like two inches thick or inch and a half or whatever, that has, so it's much more than, than what's concisely here. So will the adoption of this negate that document, or is that like the big document that backs this up, or how do those work together, or not at all?
So, that's one of the documents that, believe it, the title's Land Use and Transportation Study or Plan. They definitely use that to, to springboard off of. I mean, they used all these documents to kind of wrap them into this comprehensive plan. My understanding is that the 2013 fold, folded future land use plan was the, was the action to sort of distill all that into a easier to read document, easy to handle document? So I think that the, that study doesn't, it's not that it's no good anymore, but this is just the next generation of those documents. It has a lot of great information in it, but it's not, you know, there's certainly many areas of town that have changed since, since the city put that one together.
And also that thicker plan had transportation, look at transportation systems. We cover the majority of that now with our MPO, and that is our major roadway plans that we look at and get funding for through the state. So we didn't want, we tried to separate them even further and say, hey, this is the future land use plan. It does, you know, it's not really a transportation plan, we have a plan for transportation, be it our long-range transportation plan, and that's being updated this year, and I can't remember, that goes through 2040 or 2050 is the new updated version of it that will come out later this year, but this is truly just distilled down from that big transportation land use plan down to a land use plan. So we will use the land use plan when working on the big transportation document with our MPO group, Rex Montgomery, David Madsker, so hopefully that answers your questions.
Other questions?
All right. I mean, I might be the only one. I kind of read through it twice. And I see, or didn't think, my, I just think that they did an excellent job with it. When they, the very first meeting I was involved in, the, the design workshop, those, those people's enthusiasm was just unreal. And I think everybody's done a great job with this.
Well, certainly.
I'm, I'm curious about the, the part to the back where you get into the action items and so forth. Then there's a column for responsibility and the action summary. When is the responsibility for each of those items going to be assigned?
Well, we look yearly, we have goals and objectives that comes through city council, and there will be actual items in those goals and objectives because some of those items in the back do take to accomplish. They're not all free things that we can look at and do, but those, those, we take that comprehensive plan, we look at the actionable items, some of them are underway currently, if you read it in the back, and some of them have been completed already. And that is your checklist, I guess. As we develop goals and objectives each year, each fiscal year for the city, you know, those goals and objectives will reflect the portions in that back of that document that we can afford to do, you know, looking at the matrix. And those will change and be fluid over time. So it's just a snapshot in time, like here's right now what we feel are the actionable items and what to look at. But they will change yearly based on funding and what's the city's perspective as it goes along each year. I think that's what Sheriff said earlier, it's a living document, you can't just, it's just not something to set on the shelf and pull out once a year and look at the goals. You know, we have to look at, make sure what we are doing, actual items do meet those charts in the back and how they change through the years. And it is good to look at it throughout the year, make it dog-eared, well-read document borne out by staff and the boards and commissions too. I mean, it is a guide to the future of the city, and it does have a lot of information in the back, actual items. Most of it is from other studies. There's some new things in the document that weren't in the previous studies, but the city is blessed to have had those studies done very detailed, and that helped a lot in the comprehensive plan, pulling them all together, trying to make sense out of all of them and putting them in some sort of short-term, midterm, long-term goal range. But those can be tweaked too, if you look through it and you see something you wish to, hey, should this not be a shorter term or a medium term? I mean, things like that's what we need feedback from, from everybody right now, the council and the planning commission, so.
Well, the worst thing we can do is to spend all the money that we've spent on an excellent study like this, and then just as you say, put it on the shelf. Because, you know, we've had several studies through the years, and I'm glad to see that column in there about whose responsibility it is to take that action item and go to it. And, well, yeah, maybe that's not going to be part of the original document, but I'm certainly hoping that's something that does stay active and does stay alive. Like you guys said, it's a living document, and I think that's very important.
Absolutely.
Um, now you're gonna think I'm picky. But on page 39, given that this is a draft document, you could do a better photograph than that. I can think about three reasons as I look at that took a photograph. This is something that's going to live for a lot of years.
Right, okay.
You know, the sign's been repainted, that business is gone, and you got somebody that's been laying rubber all the way up the road, and that just doesn't give you what you want to give.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay.
It's the same thing. I mean, as you know, with big documents like this, staff reads them and reads them and looks and looks, and inevitably we start reading over the things we should, you know, could catch, and that's why it's good to have a lot of eyes like that.
Well, you know, and credit where credit's due, where you talk about the city council on the very back page, that's your current city council. You've got two other city council members that did have input in this, and I'm wondering if they should not be acknowledged. And, and Allison is not on here for the planning commission, and all those are folks that did have input into this.
All right, we'll look at that too. I'm taking that.
So.
What, that was page 39, wasn't it, if I remember?
39 was the slide, 162 was the acknowledgements.
Right.
I think there's a couple other pictures that might be nice to put in local ones. The other question I had, and if we're gonna redo any of this, which overall I think it's okay if we can't do that or whatever, but on page 77, it talks about fly fishing economy, and it talks very nicely about North Carolina. So whether we, do we have info for Tennessee or the North Carolina example is just because we're kind of the same area for trout fishing, so that gives us a picture if we don't have Tennessee information. So it's all entered, it's, it's really nice. So what?
We'll check on that and see what.
I mean, I think it's okay if Tennessee doesn't collect that data, and I think providing it's nice and it enhances, but it'd be great if, if Tennessee had, had information if we're gonna, if we're gonna do any editing.
Yes, like I said, it would be good to, once again, everybody read it again and coming out, they just shoot us emails and we can look at that. Obviously, there comes a cutoff limit if we're going to hit the 15th of June, so you could do that over the next couple of weeks, that would be appreciated from everybody if you see something. And certainly, certainly can continue taking comments now if you want to do that.
Standing on what Margaret said about that, TWRA would have all those numbers for Northeast Tennessee.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Question. Who will be seeing this document?
Everybody. It'll, it'll go on the website.
Page by page on the website?
Yes.
Okay. And that, and that's, that's the sole way it'll be distributed?
Well, everybody, the planning commission will make sure to get you all a hardbound copy, and the city council will have a hardbound copy.
I just, I just didn't know if prospective industry or, you know, would get a copy of this or?
I don't know what their practice is right now. We certainly can talk with our economic development department and see if they want to include one, we certainly can put that information in packets to companies and prospectus.
This is an excellent tool, and it really puts a good foot forward for Bristol and, Dr. Webb's right on with what he's saying. I could see it not only at the chamber, but also at the library, just increasing the, the ability for, for eyes on it.
Yes, we'll make sure to get a copies in the library that was probably already anticipated to get them to the libraries, and we'll get the chamber a copy also.
All right, so there's no action we have to take tonight. Is there any other questions or comments at this point in time? And as Tim suggested, please put another set of eyes on this again and send them any emails of anything that you see, because this document is going to have a long life to it, and we, we do want it to look right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, in our packet was a chapter two, do we need to update our zoning regs with that?
What was in your packet is the updated chapter two for the regulations that took effect April 24th. So if you'll take your old chapter two out, put your chapter two in, that's the information in your packet. And you also received in your package your to-do education list, so make sure to look at that, please.
Folks, we're at the very end.
Tim, one question on the training list. The, the property rights training session, is someone gonna be doing that one or?
Typically Danielle does that toward December, if I remember Danielle, is that correct?
I've done it in December for the last several years, so I'll be happy to do that again, if that's what the planning commission would like to hear.
Did she make that four hours?
I don't think you want me to make that four hours.
The web, some of the webinars are great.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, folks, we're at the end. Is there anything else that anybody wants to say about anything?
Just a good job to the planning commission for another outstanding meeting this evening, and, and by all means, applause to the folks who's been involved in this, this comprehensive plan.
Yeah, Kelly, I'd like to thank Margaret and Malin for doing a good job through this virus situation. They've really stepped up to the plate and they've kept it under control, and I'd like to thank them.
They have done an excellent job. I've watched several of their city council meetings additionally, and very good job in the way they've handled that. They've kept everybody informed, they've kept the city running, yes.
So.
I enjoyed seeing the update on the advanced construction too.
Yeah, that was good. Also, we have a meeting in the morning, the very first thing at nine o'clock will be update from the health department. So if people want to tune in for that part, it's usually 20 to 30 minutes with health department presenting and giving information. Also, since you opened that, Joel, just a reminder for, it's on all of us to make this succeed, and I'm sure most of y'all have read a lot, but we can have a paradigm shift at any time. We've been very, very, very fortunate in Bristol and in our region, both Southwest Virginia and Northeast Tennessee. Hopefully that'll continue with warm weather that reduces chances of spread. But as they say, one bad apple could really change the pattern, so. And just a little concerning seeing people pretty excited about getting out and that social distancing and wearing a mask. And I'll say that because of our metro health department, y'all are getting more than you asked for. Because of our metro health department, we've been able to participate in calls that go to all six, a phone call that went for two and a half weeks every day, and then now it's three days a week with the tech, getting a report from the task force saying, here's what's happened in 89 counties, we hope you metros will follow close and communicate what your plans are if they're different. I have been very, very impressed. The fact that we're giving out masks is putting a real emphasis on that, that's on the government spending federal dollars to buy eventually a mask for every citizen in Tennessee can have one. So really emphasizing that, also emphasizing their approach is trying to get business to comply and set the, at the stage and set the tone and do the leadership on social distancing, on masks, on the things that then hope and more of our citizens will see and follow suit. So just hope that everybody's on board with that and that we can do that. And obviously, we're doing this instead of meeting in person, and Tim and planning staff, thanks for setting up everything, and Shane for doing the public comment in the efficient way with keeping everybody safe. Appreciate that Mr. Baker wore a mask. So anyway, just appreciate everybody trying to be mentors and provide leadership to citizens as we go forward. So, sorry, Joel, thank you for that opening.
That's, that's okay, I've got one other. I think, Tim, isn't this Public Works Week or something?
Yes, sir, this is Public Works Week. So if you see a Public Works employee, please thank them, and that would include parks and rec workers also.
Yes.
Do maintain parks and buildings, and it takes a team effort, and we like to believe we have the best services, period. Just, that's what we like to believe, and that's what we strive for. So we do appreciate all the hard work of the men and women that make it possible.
This is a fantastic city we live in, and it, it is teamwork of everybody pulling together and making things happen. I know we're all very proud to live here.
Yeah.
A place to raise a family.
It is.
Also, I'll just, I'll just add the, the design people who did the comprehensive plan, I think they were very excited. I think they did not know Bristol before they got here, and we're just really excited to see what was here, so. And they're from Asheville, so I think it's a huge compliment for how excited they were to work with us.
Anything else? Kevin?
Adequate, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good night, everybody.